Greetings and welcome. Are you in New York City or where are you?
I am in Spain.
Spain, okay. So, we've just been introducing ourselves a little bit and we're beginning the meeting since more than all of us who have communicated back are here, which is wonderful. And Garrett has introduced himself a little bit. Perhaps you could do that again, but perhaps before... Do you want to introduce yourself? Steph is in London. He's originally from Greece. He's in the black screen. He's having some video problems. And Tito and Mari and Juan, would you like to introduce yourselves just in one or two minutes? Where you are, a little bit your name perhaps, and a little bit about your specific interests, both as board team members, but your own personal interests?
Okay. Who starts?
You can... Juan, why don't you start?
Ah, okay. Well, my name is Juan. I live in Spain. I am currently building a new startup focused on education. We are following the MOOC model, like Coursera, Udacity. Do you know them?
Very much like that. First one, Juan.
Yes. Excuse me, my English, maybe I don't understand.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm laughing at the other school. It's funny. I'm sorry. I'm not laughing at you. I'm so sorry. I've never been on Google+ before, so this is a new experience for me. I'm so sorry. I apologize. Your English is great. Your English is perfect.
Thank you. Well, I was telling that, well, I am building a new startup. We're already building a new course and we are talking to universities in Spain. My interest in Scott project is that we are following the same goal, that is providing education for the people. We are not following the same method, but I think we can find points that we can collaborate.
Fantastic. Thank you, Juan. Very nice to meet you and I'm glad you've joined us. Tito or Mari?
Mari, please.
Mari? Mari?
Oh, me. Okay, Mari, sorry.
Sorry?
I am actually a professor in a brick-and-mortar school, traditional school, and I am very interested in where education is going in these days. And one of the big issues is where do we take serious education? I actually have a lot of questions I want to ask Scott about how he's approaching this. But I'll just say that I'm, you know, traditional, brick-and-mortar school, traditional accreditation, and I do know, I come with a wealth of knowledge about all of those things. And can't wait to see what the model is and where he wants to take this organization.
Great. Welcome. Greetings. Thank you. Tito and Steph? Tito, maybe, since, until Steph maybe gets his video up?
Just a question, Mari. I didn't get where are you from?
Cleveland, Ohio, and I teach at the Cleveland Institute of Art.
Oh, very nice. So you are art teacher?
Design.
Design, very interesting.
Communication design, yeah.
Tito, until Steph gets his video up?
Okay, okay. Okay, can I introduce myself then?
Please?
Okay. Okay, my name is Tito. You can call me Tito. And I'm also, I'm from University of Indonesia.
Sorry, I didn't hear. I didn't hear where you're from?
I am from Jakarta, actually, but I teach in University of Indonesia.
Okay.
University of Indonesia in Jakarta. And, but actually, I am interested in Scott, in Scott project, yeah, because I think Scott project will be, what, a big step in education, especially in Indonesia, yeah, especially Indonesia as the third country, developed country. Then I think, I think we should be more serious with this project, I think. Because it can be great if the project is run to all people around the world and I think we can get many advantages from our project. I think I will, so far, I will be more commitment to myself, to this project. Okay?
Scott, great. This is really great.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you and welcome. Yes. I'm curious, Steph, if you would like to introduce yourself now with behind the black screen?
Yeah, apologies for that. Actually, my connection had a problem. Hello, everyone. I'm Stephanis. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. Thank you so much for today and yeah, thanks a lot, Scott, for organizing this amazing meeting. So, I come from Greece. I live and work in London and I have a really strong background in business and marketing. So, I'm on, and sorry, I'm an online marketing professional and what I'm doing at the moment is like working for VivaKey with senior partner of Google. And what we are trying to do is like launching new products and, you know, marketing campaigns in Europe, Middle East and Africa. So, I'm really interested, you know, getting gates with the project, you know, have a really interesting discussion with you and, you know, try to find solutions for the challenges, try to make, you know, the extra step and, you know, really move forward. Can't wait for our collaboration, nice discussing and, you know, serve insights and knowledge.
Fantastic. Steph, very nice to meet you and I've been typing in some relevant World University and School Wiki subject pages to some of what we've said as examples of perhaps both subjects as well as countries or nation-states. I can find more, but that was sort of part of this conversation. Just a little bit of history about World University and School?
I didn't present myself.
Oh, sorry, Garrett. Yes, yes.
If we are not, so hi, hi all together. Nice to meet you. So, my name is Garrett Moerens.
Say your name again, Garrett Moerens.
Moerens. Yeah, but just you, Garrett. Okay. I'm a scientist and I have my PhD from the medical faculty of the University of Oslo, where I was working with stem cells. I did postdoc at the Max Planck Institute for Molecular Genetics in Berlin, where I was working on induced pluripotent stem cells and systems biology and this led me to synthetic biology. And basically, synthetic biology is a very new science, where we try to build with genetic engineering techniques, things which are not found in nature. So, we are trying to rebuild new stuff with biological material. And this science is very computer-based, so I'm, in addition, that I have many years' experience in the wet lab. I'm also...
Sorry, where? Many years' experience, where?
The wet lab. So, this means that I was pipetting and doing animal experiments and stuff like this. So, but now mainly, I'm a coder, so I'm an Apple developer and I'm, my main language is Objective-C. So, just for my scientific background. So, what I'm actually doing, so I founded two years ago an institute called the Kipos Institute and we are very focused on crowdsourcing in science and to apply new collaboration, new education methods. So, I actually was early involved in Udacity and was talking to this discussion with this people. Also, was asked for advice for when we're built up Udacity and I also am very interested in this field of crowdsourcing in science. So, what I mean by this is that I think we will change totally how we will do science in the future. Basically, I think the future is that we collaborate over the internet in groups and these groups will be much more powerful than the traditional way we're doing science because a group of scientists is much more likely to solve complex problems. Also, you can increase the speed. Just to give you an example, so you have the iGEM competition, which are using this, they have demonstrated they can do projects in three months, where normally, a postdoctoral student would use three years. So, you can increase this factor 10 by using this kind of approaches, which make science much more powerful. Also, this is in line with novel kinds of publications, direct online publication instead to go through journals. So, we are developing a system where you directly publish your science results and people are reacting directly. So, you can save up to, you can be up to five years ahead of what's going on. And all this work is for me a structural basic for my work as a synthetic biologist. And so, what I'm doing now as a practical project, which is my startup, also why I joined this course, is to build a biological computer. So, this is about to explain easily if you have a disease like diabetes, where you have a dysregulation of hormones. This is tiny computer can first sense your blood glucose and then automatically regulate your insulin. So, you can either implant or a tiny device and automatically your insulin get regulated. So, before patients were really suffering because they had to every day to monitor their glucose and really to follow tightly with, and also they had to take care of injecting insulin. So, this new device, which we are developing, will totally automate the whole process. You don't even need to care. Also, you have a much easier lifestyle. You can eat and your body will automatically regulate your insulin. And this sourcing is monitored by mobile application. And also, in addition, this is applicable for other endocrine diseases like osteoporosis or hormonal replacement therapies. So, in the US, 5% of the population have some kind of endocrine disease and on the world base, for example, 350 million diabetes patients are. So, we have a really big market. So, this is a really big, big stuff and a big, big story which we are doing. So, and I'm joining, joining two of these courses. So, the basic technology course and this broad course to learn more about the entrepreneurship business because my basics background is science. Okay.
Fantastic. All, and Garrett, and thank you. This is a potential wonderful, real-time collaborative sort of opportunity, even perhaps that will facilitate your synthetic biological interests, Garrett, with World University and School. Perhaps these pages can be focuses. You already have so many projects, Garrett. It's quite fun and fascinating to consider how they might come together and how we might all bring some of these university-related questions together in our own varied interests.
Yeah, that's the last word about my location. At the moment, I'm in Berlin, but I have already preliminary board, so some people advised me or discussed this before. Some most likely will move to San Francisco to have the headquarter of my startup there. So, I will be close to your area, Scott.
Fantastic. Your first language, Garrett, is Norwegian or German?
Oh, German. I was born in Germany, but at a very early stage, I moved away from Germany and I have a Norwegian wife. So, we spent many years in different countries. I was living in Norway and I was living in the States for several years. I was living in Italy, in England. So, I am more international. I don't have actually so much connections to Germany. So, I just spent here a couple of years. So, actually, most, my, the place which feel mostly home is New York, actually.
Fantastic. And Steph, your first language is Greek, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. And Tito, it's, your first language is Indonesian, not Malay, right?
Yes, Indonesian.
Okay, and yours, Juan, is Spanish and Mari, Mari, yours and mine is English. So, one of the things that was quite exciting that emerged from this class as we were asked to form boards and teams, that I hadn't seen before this class, in terms of World University and Schools focus on all 205 countries or so with the Olympics, Wiki addable and 7,413 languages, also Wiki addable, was that we could find, we could build a team that would be from all over the world. And in fact, this Google Hangout is a fascinating sort of in-the-moment sort of instantiation of that. And to focus the board questions, I don't know if you were all able to watch the videos from Clint Corver for this session, but...
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Good, good. There are a few things. The feedback aspect of assessments, for example, how did the board meeting go after the fact, from both my perspective and your perspective, will be very interesting, I think. And also, perhaps, the aspect of bringing conversation to the three agenda items, I think is what I would find most helpful from your insight, your advice, your knowledge from all your various perspectives. Just a little bit by way of background. World University and School has got incorporated in the US in 2010 in California. So, we're an educational organization, an educational nonprofit. We got the all-important 501(c)(3) tax-exempt status in 2011 and accreditation, which Juan you mentioned, maybe some other people mentioned, with WASC Senior, Western Association of Schools and Colleges. It's a regional accreditation board. Mari, you mentioned this, is a three-stage process. So, we first have to prove eligibility, basically pay them $10,000. Then we have to see our, we have to get students and invite them through a series of classes and then we have to graduate our first class. And that is potentially in 2018. And after that, we're fully accredited. And WASC Senior at the undergraduate level also accredits Stanford and Berkeley as well as even the Quaker High School Gap Semester in the foothills of the Sierras, called the Woolman Semester. So, I'm physically based in California. That makes WASC accreditation very interesting. World University and School, go ahead, Mari.
No, keep going, but I do have some other questions about accreditation.
Great. World University and School wants to do, in this just humongous vision, five degrees, mostly university-oriented. The first being bachelor's and the first class starting matriculating in 2014. The second being PhD, and these are all MIT-centric, building out of the 2,100 courses from MIT. And we would like to become an MIT-Harvard online. So, research such as what Garrett does is a very interesting example of how crowdsourced and computer-focused biological research might work. So, the second PhD matriculating class would be in 2015, all in English at this point. The law degree, and there are about 12 law schools in California which are offering online classes, not ABA-approved, however, which is the American Bar Association, but they can take a test after their first year and then they can pass, they can seek to take the bar at the end of their studies. So, apparently, it's, there isn't a sort of block against that in California. And then, medical degree. And the first two years of the medical degree are easily doable online per a previous board member who was a physician, a medical doctor in California, who went to UC Santa Cruz and UCSF for his medical degree. And then, in addition, an international baccalaureate degree. But that only, only in the six United Nations languages and perhaps Portuguese because it's a lingua franca of Africa and maybe Swahili, we see, maybe German, we'll see. It's still unfolding. Bachelor's degree, 2,000 students in 2014 is sort of the goal, accredited with WASC right now, in something like Google Hangouts. So, yes, Coursera and Stanford Online Free Courses are great, but they're not necessarily very conference-method oriented. We're not talking around the table like in the ancient Greek sort of examples of the academy and what came out of Plato and sort of his middle dialogues, for example. So, these technologies make it possible. Here we are, all over the world, creating this conversation around this class-board sort of exploration. So, that's a little bit of, so the board meeting for World University and School is loosely in a Quaker format. So, I'm sort of the clerk and I listen and we try to reach a consensus. And that happens the first Saturdays, the second Saturdays of every month. And we've had about 18 of those, so back maybe a year and a half roughly. We've had two annual meetings, which are the legal requirement. And the second one was just a month ago in the state of California. So, maybe next week, which is our next monthly business meeting for the actual World University and School Board, will be both on telephone and in this Google Hangout. We'll see how that works out together. But Mari, that's, those were a little bit of sort of the background, history focus in a nutshell for World University and School right now. Mari, your thoughts?
No, that answered actually a lot of my questions about accreditation because that is a very serious component of your business plan. One more thing, most departments also need to be accredited. So, when you say you're offering a bachelor's, in what?
We want to probably offer the 30, 36 majors that the MIT Open Courseware is divided into.
Do you understand you might need to get accredited by 30 different bodies for those areas?
We would like to scale. We would like to scale large. We would like to be part of World University and Schools sort of contract, if you will, with society, with world society, is we would like to be a significant job producer. So, yes, at the graduate level, I had realized we would need to credit physics with the Physics Association and, but that's still some ways off. But we would like to be a job producer and with good academic jobs. So, accreditation will be part of that and endowment is the business model. We'll build an endowment and we'll use this endowment to create, sort of, pay all these organizations. It seems like crazy to offer free Creative Commons license degrees, which are potentially MIT-centric. It's an interesting...
Right. Two notes. One, undergrad, you have to be accredited by those things too.
Yeah.
You have to, especially if you're looking at being a job producer. The degree will not bear any weight if it is not accredited, even on an undergraduate level. It's not, you've really got to take that very, very seriously.
We'll have those.
Number one.
Thanks.
Good. Number two, the two revenue streams that schools traditionally use are endowment, I'm so glad you mentioned that, and alumni. And I see your revenue stream rise heavily on bookstore. I think you need to figure out a way to connect to these traditional revenue streams as well.
We don't have alumni, so it will have to be fundraising and grant writing to find the first Bill Gates that wants to give us the first million or the first... We have about $1,000 a year to date. So, we're very much a startup. And we had possibly a little bit less than that in the previous financial year. So, Steph, did you raise your finger, have a thought back then, a while ago?
No, I'm all right. Thank you.
Okay. Other, getting maybe to the money issue or other comments on what we've talked about a little bit so far?
I have actually a longer list of things I would like to ask. So, one thing, who is the team you have? So, who are, how many people are on your team now? And can you briefly describe the team?
So, there, right now, there may be 150, 200, maybe 300 people on a monthly email list, which I let people know about the upcoming board and has a little bit of news about World University and School. And that's posted right here, the agendas and everything. So, in one sense, that's, this is the World University and School blog and the agenda there. So, and then there's a sporadic email list and there's possibly 20 people on that. And in the monthly board meeting, in the monthly business meetings, there are three board members right now who are on the actual board, sort of two on the executive board and one in the general board. And that's sort of, kind of a core team, but it's very loose. So, building team is important from my perspective. It's been very loose so far.
So, it's a beginning. You are the key person.
And I talk...
You still need...
I talk a lot with one person who went to MIT in chemistry and he lives in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania and he has a PhD in physics or in chemistry, I think. And so, they're the three, sort of, the two executive board members are perhaps the closest team who are quite active.
Yeah. So, the next question is, as I sent you already by email. So, we have already some very good startups like MITx, AddX, Udacity. If you briefly would like to describe how you differentiate from these other startups to make it very clear, what is the main difference? Or what problem do you solve for me, which these other things do not solve at the moment?
Aggregator of great universities' coursework. So, we're core-centric and we want to be an open wiki for people, the people teaching as one wing and all languages, all countries. These organizations don't do that. And then, on the other wing, we want to offer free degrees that are, and that's also what these organizations don't do. And then, in addition, our software, and it was just in a conversation with the editor of Singularity News, which is the Ray Kurzweil thing. We potentially like to become a filter for if you wanted a course and couldn't find it, our Wiki software, as we move to Wikidata, Wikibase, would provide that filter and that opportunity to identify the courses that you couldn't find otherwise.
So, the degrees, as long as I know from Udacity, they will give you until graduation. So, you will get, I think, a master degree you can get from Udacity. So, they will stop before the PhD and the argument is that they think that the PhD is something which has to be face-to-face, is a very personal follow-up. So, Udacity is not believing in PhD education at the moment, but they will offer me a degree, so I can make my basic education there. Also, Udacity has a business model where they offer me a job. So, the whole stuff, how Udacity is working, that they identify the big, the good students and selling to recruiters and you know, for example...
They would offer you or they would offer the graduated student a job?
The student. So, there's a business model of them and this may be also interesting for you. So there's a business model of them and this maybe is also interesting for you. And they told me, so they get one year of salary for these students. So this is not, this is a real interesting amount of money. So maybe one, one thing is very special that Udacity has a stronger focus on, on programming. So there's a real shortage in the market for very good programmers. And so they're identifying, identifying good programmers, actually selling them. And this is a win, win deal. So it's good for the student because you get the job. And it's good for Udacity because they get one year of salary. So you will get maybe something like $150,000 from the recruiter. And this is, this is interesting, interesting.
Wait, I don't quite understand it. The, the, the student who graduates with the hundred dollar masters from Udacity goes into Udacity or goes into another company that Udacity is collaborating with?
Into, into another company. So Udacity is collaborating with recruiters. So, and they, they paying one year of salary. So if they find a good, if Udacity is identifying a good candidate for a company and the company is taking this candidate, the company has to pay one year of salary for, for this candidate. And this is, this because, for example, good programmers are very hard to find. So they, they're getting something. Udacity is getting $150,000 if they, if they bring a good, good candidate and the candidate get recruited. So this is a way that you do money.
It's a great business model. It's very sensible. It's also quite Silicon Valley rooted and it's, yeah.
So the next, next thing I want to discuss with you is that you were saying one differentiator of your language. And you are American and I think you see this from one perspective. I, I see this quite different. So example, if you ask me, what, what is the most annoying thing with, with, with the Macintosh? The most annoying thing for me is that I get this stuff in German. So that, that, as I said, the app shop, for example, is German. Apple is thinking the opposite, they're thinking from an American perspective and they're thinking, oh, people in the different countries would like to have in their native, native language, totally different. If I'm doing science, I would hate to do science in German. Really, this would be my main reason not to follow your course. Because in, in science, English is the main language. Everything goes in English. And I, I would totally disagree to do this in a different language. I'm even not capable to do. So I wouldn't be able to, to have a scientific conversation with you in German or Norwegian because I know these terms only, only in, in English. And this is the same with many of my friends, many people, people I know. So this, I think this is really a question of perspective. As an American person, I'm thinking, maybe you, you are used that everybody is speaking English. And if you come to another country, it would be hard for you to, to make a conversation in a different language. But especially if you come from a small country, for example, in Norway, everything is in English, everybody is, is managing English. And if you want to attend university in Norway, you have to pass a TOEFL test on a good level in order to go to school. All, all education materials in English. So they don't teach in Norwegian, they teach in English. If, if, so this, this can be quite different if you're very focusing to do the education in, in languages, maybe not all people really like. I would hate. So, okay, this is this one. And the other thing is, what I was thinking about is the idea of lifelong learning. So I, I have a PhD and before it was like this, if you have a PhD, you know everything. Situation totally changed to now. I don't know anything and I have constantly, constantly to learn new things. So what I did recently, I did a Stanford course in, in Objective C programming. I do know a course at Stanford for, for this entrepreneurship. I think lifelong learning is a very important, important part and which, which is maybe changing. And I was thinking about, this could be really a big differentiator of your approach because the other, other Udacity don't have this concept and the other don't have this concept. Do you have any thoughts in this direction?
Uh, thank you. I very much appreciate. Garrett and I have had some extended email conversations, which I've also found both generative and illuminating. So a couple of things about English as, as the lingua franca of science. Yes, that's true. But the beauty of something like World University in School is the idea of conversation and conference method. So I think it's valuable for science as a whole for the science conversation to happen in language, in many languages. And I'm glad you and your Norwegian wife and friends in Norway see the sensibleness of working in English in science. That is, it's great for English speaking countries, for one. And it's, it's a remarkable network because it's, it's so robust in the English language. But science is in, in other languages will yield all kinds of other approaches to knowledge. And so that there's choice out there, Germany has a long scientific tradition, of course.
But it's mainly dead.
But what?
The, the science in Germany is mainly dead. So every, every good scientist is leaving to the States. Europe, Europe is in deep crisis. And I think basically, basically if you're doing, doing science today, you, you, and I'm only knowledgeable in biomedical science. So I don't know anything about the other, other things. But if you're doing biomedical science, you will definitely move to the States.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm, I look forward to meeting you in person when you do come to Silicon Valley. And this is, I, I, but I also think it's fascinating. What's fascinating about the web and the internet is that it's distributed. And that science in this instance can happen in many languages. And World University in School would like to even facilitate it in many, many languages, thanks to MIT Open Courseware. And that the end user, for example, Tito or Juan in Spanish or Indonesian could begin to explore questions of science because MIT Courseware was translated with Amara subtitles, also crowdsourced, is a remarkable opportunity. So science grows, the confrontation in, in science between scientists grow. So I, 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 it's great that you're going to move to the States and that you're, you, you have all these fascinating crowdsourced approaches to synthetic biology. And I suspect you will do very well. And I suspect our collaboration will be rich and fantastic, in fact. But I'm glad that science can be potentially and that knowledge generation, which is what World University in School is about, can be in many, will be in many languages.
One, one thing could be very nice. So this is my personal perspective and how, how I see things. And other people can see quite different. But maybe to make this more objective, maybe it's necessary to make a test. So to, to find, find a little bit out to, to analyze the market. For example, if you make a questionnaire and asking people, what is your preference language to, to do the course? Maybe something like this could, could help. How big really is the demand is, is to do this? For sure, this can be my very, very personal perspective. But I think since I have a different reception of this than you, maybe one should try to, to test these hypotheses. So if I'm saying I would go for English and you're saying the international languages or all languages are important, maybe this, this question needs to be tested to, to rationalize this, if the function is correct.
I, 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 World University in School has already this history. And we're very much going from the perspective of MIT Open Courseware and OLPC, which was, MIT Open Courseware was an attempt 10 years ago to put science and an MIT education online. And one laptop per child was an attempt to put rugged laptops in the 2 billion poorest kids' hands in the world. And both have had their successes and their failures. But they weren't necessarily sort of surveys beforehand that asked, is this a good idea? You didn't have Nicholas Negroponte sort of going around. And, and while there is a kind of value to sort of, let's poll, let's poll world populations, let's poll all 7,413 languages and say, would you like an open, free MIT centric school that's Creative Commons licensed, that has lots of science in your language or not? We could ask that, but, and maybe we will. We, World University in School wants to be very metric focused and will perhaps ask at some point whether people want to become, whether want, you know, people, for example, in Cambodia or in wherever, you know, native language speakers in Aboriginal parts of Australia want a course in their, want a, a school in their language. But perhaps we'll put it into their language first before we do those surveys.
Yeah. Just one question to help me to understand. So there's, if you talk about MIT centric, this is something I, I didn't quite get. So what do you mean with MIT centric?
I'll type the URL here.
Can you just explain it in a few words? So, so what, what do you mean with MIT centric? Is this some, do you follow the, the MIT course structure or what you mean by MIT centric?
So, yes, those 2,100 courses will be the basis for both undergraduate and graduate degrees in English and other languages. So perhaps they will be MOOC-ized. But because of the possibility to study how students learn in exchange for World University in School from this sort of codified base of courses, which all interrelates and builds upon previous courses, those 2,100 courses will be a basis. We also have a great universities focus. So maybe we'll add the 42 courses from Yale with video. MIT Open Courseware has about 100 courses in video at this point.
So you mean you will, will take the same courses as MIT Open Courses is doing. So you mean MIT centric, you will cover the same specter as they do?
And then we'll add to it as we begin to be able to hire our own faculty. Our, while, while Udacity has this model of, let's collaborate with companies, we'll find promising students, the companies will pay Udacity $150,000 and the students will then work for those companies perhaps after they graduate.
Yeah.
School has a kind of intern model. We would like to hire the great matriculated students at an, at the undergraduate, at the graduate and undergraduate level from say Stanford, MIT, Harvard, Yale, Princeton to build the university.
Yeah. So, but if you, it says, tell me now, you will do the same courses basically, which MIT is doing. So then the question of the differentiator is, becomes even more important. So this will be really a big question if you have the same education offerings. If you're offering to me basically the same course, so why I should take yours and not, not a big name? Because one thing is also if you're talking about accreditation, if you're looking, some, some places had gotten accreditation and after a couple of years, they lost. So if, if I'm a student, then, then I would, would ask myself, I'm MIT, I trust. MIT, I, I know they, they will not lose. But your brand is unknown for me. Why should I trust you? And why should, should, so what, what is the motivation? What problem do you solve me, solve for me? MIT is not solving for me.
Great. This, thank you, Gert, for these penetrating questions. First, in the, in the IT age, it's very, very much about networking. So instead of differentiating from MIT, which we will, because we'll also have great universities, other open courseware, eventually that will be for credit as well. We would like to accredit, we would like to do it fully with MIT. So even to the point of admissions and secure registrar. So if their 31st courses, their biggest enrolled freshman courses could just be extended online in 2014. And then World University in School might add this course or that course. And in, say, for example, the United Nations languages at the undergraduate level, a very different course was there beyond the ones from MIT that were subtitled. We would have the potential for both same and different. And that MIT centricity with its STEM focus, its science, technology, engineering and mathematics focus is a wonderful thing to grow. And I think MIT Open Courseware themselves would love to grow into other possible languages. I don't know. And potentially all other languages because it sort of extends the MIT sort of very sensible approach to sharing that this MIT Open Courseware is precedent for in a variety of directions.
Yeah. So I have another question to your introduction. So you were talking about that you will offer a PhD and a medical degree. So I went to medical school and if, if the first two years, I wouldn't be able to go online. So we did a lot of hand-on stuff. I did the section of human beings, microscoping and you do, do a lot of practical, practical things. So I cannot understand how you can transfer this to virtual world. The same thing is, is true with the PhD. So during my PhD, this is, is a lot of hand-on work, a lot of direct contact to my mentor, daily meetings with my mentor. So I think this is hard to, to transfer, especially if you do, do something in, in biomedicine. So you have to do daily, daily lab work. And sometimes people really have to show you, they have to show you how to do this. And this maybe is really hard to do, do online. So what do you think about this part of education?
Thank you for these great questions and sort of, sort of focusing sort of approaches. So I do think that, that, that there will be even, that online medicine will differentiate itself from on the ground medicine. And already that there's lots of precedent, whether it be telemedicine over say 40 years and, and as well as rural health clinics. So the value of both being able to define and develop the online approaches differentially from on the ground approaches. And with, in the best of all worlds, even collaborating with MIT Harvard, with Harvard Medical School, which seems distant at this point, would be fantastic. So I do think that the first two years can be done. And perhaps a whole new form of medicine will, building on the past, you know, 40 or 50 years of digital medicine will change.
So you're basically thinking about if a different kind of medical education than the traditional medical school is giving you. So you will try to build a new curriculum focused on, on, online, online-based structures in medicine, if I get you right.
Emerging from traditional, but yes, it will take into account sort of all these new possibilities and new opportunities. I mean, if you could put a, a hospital into remote Africa that was on a computer screen to complement the health clinic there with Harvard doctors, you know, you would have a whole new sort of net, just as sort of a way of conceiving of this, a whole new approach to medicine that to some degree already exists. I mean, I'm sure you have medical doctors Skyping with some of the poorest places in the world or Google Video Chat. But to have a whole array of resources that were far broader than that would be fascinating as well. And help the world in a variety of ways.
Yeah. So I'm basically doing basic science. So I cannot answer you this, this kind, kind of questions, how this is working. But in the basic science field, biomedical field, I think we are moving totally to, to, to design and to coding. So the, the key work of a scientist will be, be something in the, in the design of, of things, thinking about concepts and coding. So this is how the, the work field is looking. And for this part, and if you're thinking about basic, basic science in, in connection to medicine, this, this will move to a large parts online. And the hand-on work on this part is done more and more by robots now. So this, from this perspective, I can answer. From the, the more clinical oriented perspective, I don't know. So.
Great. Are you a medical doctor, Gert?
No, I'm, I'm a scientist. So.
You went to medical school, but you didn't get a degree?
No, I changed my focus to, to basic research. So my heart is basic research. So I, I did, I have my PhD from, from the medical school, but I'm, I'm just doing basic research. This is my interest. So I am not so interested to work with patients. I'm sitting and doing basic research. I know I'm mainly doing programming. So I'm doing dry lab work. So I'm doing dried-up work.
In Germany, the PhD and the MD usually go together. Where in the States, the MD is always different.
I have it from Norway. This is a different system. So you have a different PhD. This is a higher-level PhD than you get in Germany. This is something you have to do. In Germany, you have to qualify for the professorship. In Norway, you have to do this in the same exam. So it's a little bit different education system.
Great. Well, we're coming to the close of our time. And Heidi just joined us. And I think Juan has left us. And it would be just great in closing, perhaps if Heidi, you could introduce yourself. This broadcast, oh, Juan is back now. This broadcast, this hangout, it has been recorded. So it will be posted. And I hope that's okay with you. Is that okay with you? If anyone, if it's not okay with you, please say something. And Heidi, if you would care to just, would you introduce yourself just in a minute or so about where you live and perhaps some of your interests in the course and your own startup? Are you hearing us, Heidi?
I don't think so.
Okay, she's typing, but I'm not sure she has audio or something. So I would like to keep this to just an hour. And I think this first conversation and focus, we're sort of nominally both board and team members for the class. And I'm so glad that we've come together like this. And I hope we can keep an email. Okay, Heidi, thank you. I hope we can keep an email and other conversation going over the course of the week. But it's nice to, we use an hour-long sort of approach in the other sort of monthly business meeting as well. And I think people like it. I mean, meetings that go on too long, go on too long. And the possibility for committee sort of meetings in between in the course of the week, either in email or sort of even getting together. Of course, you can get together with one another, obviously, if you wanted to in some ways. But I will try to share with you some wiki subject pages that are in your spheres over the course of the week. And if there's nothing else, are there some other last comments that you might like to share before we close?
I just would like a clarification on the meetings. In your email, you sent a number of dates for meetings. And it looked like we would be meeting every week?
I think the class asked us to do four board meetings.
Right. But did you see the schedule, board meetings assignment? They want them spread out.
I haven't seen that yet. So I will check that.
Check, double-check that. And then maybe we can have, I think, because I think you need to think about a deeper accreditation. I do think you need, the language issue is a phenomenal one you need to concentrate on. And I'll give you one term to look into, which is the gigabit initiative.
Okay, thank you. I will check it out. Here is this universal translator that World University has in mind as part of our sort of coding process, just to close. And it's called Gigabit Initiative.
Yeah, anything with gigabit. There's Gigabit U, there's a Gigabit Initiative here at Case Western. There's a bunch of things going on nationally in America, and I'm sure internationally, about high bandwidth internet access. And it's actually bringing medical procedures into remote areas or underserved areas. In America, they're starting with nursing homes.
It's fantastic and so important. You'll see the list of... On this page, on the courses, the main courses page, you'll see a list of all the open, free universities I know about. So and we add them more here. So it's a useful list.
God, can you...
Go ahead, Garrett.
Can you make us a favor to put all these links we have in the chat in the minutes? It would be really nice if you can make a brief summary of this meeting that I have for the next, and to get a list of the links, if you can copy and paste. This would be of great help. Then I don't need to do by myself.
Great. So thank you all for coming. Let's stay in touch in our email group and in Coursera's Stanford Startup Board's Advanced Entrepreneurship Venture Labs course. And look forward, so very much great to have met all of you in this face-to-face. Fantastic. And we'll be in touch. I'll change some dates for the course, for the upcoming board meetings. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.